All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 5th, 2023 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Orazee Parenti. We have with us this evening.
Paul Kaplan.
Captain Gornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack DeMergen, zoning administrator.
And I think Tom Tarenti will be joining us shortly, but we'll see.
You better hurry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Definitely. We don't have a huge agenda this evening, so. All right, let's start with the minutes from last meeting. I just had a couple of comments, Jack. You're paying attention to this? Okay. On page one, under new business, there was no new business at this time. Mr. DeMergen mentioned that there are some vacancies on the Boston Post Road, so this commission may be called upon in the future. I hope so.
Right.
But it was a little vague, I thought. I think what you were saying was that you had a lot of conversations with people.
Right. We had a couple of big, larger locations open up, so I'm saying I'm sure in the future we'll get some potential.
But as written, that didn't tell me much.
Yeah, I think we can just strike that.
The only other comment I had was on page three. Third full paragraph, second line, sentence begins, "The property is a 2.06 acre." I think you want to add the word acre there. Wooded lot.
Makes sense to me.
And that is all I had on it. I don't know about Kevin, Julie.
I'll let Deb know if she'll make the changes.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Takes care of that. Next item, old business, review of drafted language for outdoor storage and display. So anyway, I know Jack consulted with Vinnie on this, and Vinnie drafted up some revised language, but essentially what he drafted up was what I had proposed, and I thought, if I remember correctly, we were going in a slightly different direction on when we last talked about this. I had said that, or we had said that we would make outdoor storage available to anyone who's got a building forty, or a space, 40,000 square feet or more.
Right.
And then we would tie, we would just put a max on outdoor sidewalk storage, display space, and then also some space in the parking lots.
Right. That's kind of what we, where we left it. Section B, that is what we recently amended. That is what Ocean State Job Lot brought in, and we approved that language last month.
So really, A is the only.
So A is the only thing that really is new here, but Vinnie didn't have this updated language in his draft, so I wrote this up to include, obviously, what we just did. So really, A is the only thing we're going over, but.
But A and B don't track together.
That's exactly. That's why.
No, I think you have to go back to what we talked about.
I'm not sure I'm making this better yet.
Yeah, you know, again, I think what we said was, if you had a space greater than 40,000 square feet, you were eligible to have outdoor display and storage.
Right.
And I had suggested that we, you know, we tie the size of the outdoor display and storage to the size of the space, the indoor space.
The building.
Yeah. But I thought we had said that we didn't want to do it that way, and what we wanted to just impose was a particular.
Right, a max.
Was that number 200?
Yes, I think it was.
1050 effect.
Yeah.
But like Kevin mentioned, it doesn't really track with B.
No.
So.
So it looks to me like we still don't have exactly what we want to send to a public hearing.
Right.
But we can reaffirm that, you know, do we want to just impose that max for any size, applicable to any size space?
We're set with B, right? Because B we already.
B is adopted. Doesn't mean we can't, you know, make adjustments here and there, but that is adopted language, yes.
What do you mean?
B was what we approved through Ocean State.
That was a text amendment we did for that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but we're not, we're not bound by that, of course.
We could still change it.
I mean, that's the regulation on the record.
Do you have this?
Yeah.
Do you have this?
Hand to God.
Yeah.
Do I, is that? Oh, that's the draft that Vinnie sent.
Right. And I think this is, this is correct. This is what we want to do, except that we don't want to say that the display area would be, will not exceed one and a half of 1% of the total square footage that is occupied. We don't want, we just want to impose a max there.
Right. Through our discussions, that's, that was my takeaway, was we would just put a maximum number on anyone eligible for.
So we're deleting subsection A, and we need to decide now whether we're going to go with the language that Vinnie drafted, which is the language that I originally suggested.
Right. You're looking at what Vinnie drafted. I took Vinnie's draft, and I changed it around based on what we had discussed, which was just that 40,000 square foot threshold, and you have 200 maximum.
What you were entitled to.
Right, so.
The minimum square footage to be able to have the outdoor space.
Is 40,000, yeah.
And the maximum outdoor.
How does that square with B?
It doesn't.
Okay. So for tenants of such plazas occupying 40 to 75, an additional 185.
Yep, no problem. Luis is waiting and laying in wait. For tenants of plazas 40 to 75,000, an additional 185. On the sidewalk is permitted for display and storage. A 185 is additional to what? The 26 square feet on the sidewalks and 50 square feet in the parking lot of the preceding sentence?
I mean, we might just want to strike B.
Listen, I think you got to go, does everybody have what Vinnie?
Is Vinnie in A?
No, only, only you had what Vinnie has because he sent it to you and I, but he did not reflect on the changes we had already made. So I took what we had discussed, and that's what I made A.
All right. I think what we need to do is go back to what I originally did, which is what Vinnie mirrored, and I think we need to work off of that to solve this little problem.
Okay.
So if you want to pass this around.
Sure, yeah.
Well, hang on a second. So A and B seem to be differentiating themselves between an outdoor storage area and a seasonal display area.
A and B.
A and B.
A and B don't make sense.
Together.
Together, and that's what prompted the whole discussion.
No, I understand, but A and B are actually talking about different things.
Right. Start, the starting point should be to get rid of A.
Okay.
And make subsection B the new A. All right? And then I think all we need to do is, we need to cover two things. One, you're not eligible for outdoor storage or display unless you have a space of over 40,000 square feet.
So you're incorporating storage and display in the same, in the same paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, again, what I had done, and what Vinnie suggested, was that we say that the outdoor display and storage area would be a percentage of the interior space occupied.
And then cap.
So that's. Then cap, because 40 becomes 600 square feet if I did my math right.
All right, so that's why we scrapped that the last time we talked about this, and we imposed a cap of 200.
Okay, so we still maintain that language, but we put a cap on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I think that, I think that solves the problem.
And we make that into just one, not A and B, that's just A?
Right.
Okay.
And then you re-letter the rest of it. Is that what, is that what everybody recalls from the last meeting?
I actually have no independent recollection, Senator. I know that you had proposed stuff, but if we're locked into B, as in boy, then my question is severalfold, but first is, what happens to anything over 75,000? Is there another provision of this regulation that takes care of that?
No, no, no.
They're maxed.
The, again, you could have 100,000 square foot space.
Okay.
You still, but you, and that makes you eligible for outdoor.
Storage slash.
Display.
An unallocated display slash storage.
But there's a max. You can't have any more than, what did we say, 200 square feet.
And what do we do with Home Depot? Is that, they're already, are they not subject to this, or?
Yeah, no, anyone that has already approved, like Ocean State, that we just did last month, if we were to vote and change this right now, their approval is still good at the language that was enacted at the time.
Right.
So basically, what we're doing here is, the entirety of B is basically going to go, because we're going to hold anyone over 40,000 square feet to the same standard, regardless if you're at 41,000 or you're at 150,000 square feet.
Subsection A is going to be deleted.
Right, but B is going to be majorly, basically everything that Ocean State Job Lot came in with is going to go out the window, too.
There's going to be no reference to 75,000 square feet.
40 or more, max 200.
40 or more, max 200, and then that percentage of.
Well, I don't even know if we need the percentage.
No.
No.
We don't need the percentage, and we're not doing it that way.
So then it would be just A?
Oh, A, no, it's 40,000 or more, you get up to 200 square feet of unallocated.
Right, which is, what is, what's A here?
That's what we're talking about.
Right.
But the 200's aggregate for the center, not just the tenant, right? So in a multi-tenanted space, say you had 2,400 footers, you still have a max, right?
Of one, if it's one building?
Let's say.
Yeah.
It's got two anchors.
It should say storage slash display, but yes.
And so together collectively, a total of 200.
Is it, yeah, is it the, is that the aggregate of the individual tenants is the question? Is there a max for, or is it per tenant over 40,000?
It's having per tenant, right?
Per tenant. If you have over 40,000 square feet, you're eligible for outdoor display and.
Up to?
Up to 200 feet.
Although, do we need to add that, per tenant?
Well.
We have an.
No, no, see, he. No, I think, I think that's why you need to work off of B. You and I can do this.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
I know, I know where we're headed.
But let's just make sure we understand the concept here for the, because we've talked about this a few times already. Again, you have to have 40,000 square feet. A tenant or an owner of a building or a tenant in some space in the building has to have more than 40,000 square feet. If he does, then he can have outdoor display or storage.
Up to 200.
Up to 200 square feet. That's where it's maxed at.
Right.
That's the concept.
Okay.
All right. I think that's what we agreed on the last time.
I think so, too, but we, and we want to keep it to one or 200 square feet per property or per tenant.
Yeah.
Because let's say you have two tenants on one property, both exceed 40,000, they can have 200 each. Okay.
It says that.
Yep, okay.
All right. We'll work on that.
Sounds good.
And leave that as is for now.
Right.
So for the. We'll get that straightened out. But again, let's just make sure we're on the same page so that we're not haggling over it again next time.
Gotcha.
All right.
What you just said made it a lot more straightforward than what we're looking at here.
I don't know what, yes.
A and B, trying to figure, trying to square them.
No, I don't think it works.
Yeah.
It doesn't work. What Vinnie had drafted was essentially what I had drafted.
Okay.
And I think we were all in agreement with that concept, up to the fact that, you know, we had, we wanted a max.
Yep.
And that was, you know, I think the way I had written it, you could have a percentage of that space in the building, you know, without, what, you know?
But we want, we want a limit.
We got to get rid of the percentage.
All right, so that's fine. We understand what we're doing on that. All right, next item, new business. St. Barbara Greek Orthodox Church requests to hold its annual Odyssey Festival.
I vote yes.
From September 1 to 4.
It's my favorite town event. I can't be objective.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. What's up? No props tonight. I'm not, I'm here on behalf of St. Barbara's.
Grace, listen to you.
Greek Orthodox Church tonight, not Co-Despotium Associates, but yeah, we're basically here to request permission to conduct the Odyssey Festival again this year from September 1st, which is a Friday, through Monday, Labor Day, which is September 4th, I believe. We're anticipating everything's going to run pretty similar to what we've had last year.
Yep, they did that.
Yeah, we've got, we'll be taking care of all that. We have filed the permit with the, with the building department. I've been in contact with the police department, so we've got police protection all lined up. I've been in contact with the fire marshal. So everything is already kind of put in motion with it, so we're not anticipating any issues. Overflow parking will be using Holy Infant Church as well as Good Shepherd Church up the road, which will have shuttle bus service back and forth between the church and the campus grounds. So, I mean, that's pretty much it. Status quo from last year.
Right, and years before that.
Pretty familiar with the event. All right.
It's okay if we make motions or not?
Yeah, I suppose we need a.
Yes.
Yeah, we might as well, just to be safe.
All right, so I'll move that we approve the St. Barbara Greek Orthodox Church Annual Odyssey Festival to be held on September 1st, 2023, through September 4th, 2023, subject to the police approval, the fire marshal approval, and the insurance being posted.
Town Sanitarium.
Town Sanitarium.
Yeah, we've been, I filed the permit with Brian also, so that's, that's in the works still.
All right, we have a motion to approve it.
I'll second the motion.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, very good.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see you Labor Day weekend.
Yes, you will. Have a good day.
All right. Now, the next item on our agenda, it's under new business, is a review of a potential use in the C2 zone for a quote "dry ice cleaning service" unquote. Is there, you know, this is a contemplated use in the C2 zone, and.
It's presently not one of the listed ones, which by definition means it's not there.
Well, that's, that's the discussion tonight.
That's kind of what we're here to discuss.
You know, the potential applicant, he's not really an applicant at this point. He hasn't plowed a, the potential applicant is going to speak to his business, and we're going to try to figure out whether it's a permitted use, permitted by special exception, or prohibited, just to give, you know, Jack some indication. If it's, I looked at the regulations, and the one thing I can say is it's clearly not a special use. So I suppose, you know, the advice we give tonight, it's either, we're either going to say it's a permitted use, and you don't need to come before the commission essentially, other than for site plan approval, or it's prohibited.
Right.
But it's not going to, it's not going to involve a special permit unless the regulations change.
Exactly. And I've highlighted a couple sections of the C2 zone that this use might fall under. I think once we get a better idea of what the business is, we'll know. But I have some potential language that might be the closest to what we have, so.
All right, so.
Yep.
This, I assume, is the potential applicant.
The dry ice.
Yes, the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Mike Landino. I'm the owner of DIM 109 LLC. It's a dry ice cleaning business. And to also let you know, I'm a former resident of Orange for 20 years. So it's a new business startup. I'm looking at a specific property at 367 Boston Post Road.
Can you, Mike, can you just tell us what, for me anyhow, what dry ice cleaning is?
Yeah. So dry ice cleaning takes solid form of CO2, dry ice, and we introduce it into an airstream and propel it against a dirty surface, and it cleans the surface without damaging it, without leaving any scratches. So unlike sandblasting, you have a second grit media, and it's going to scratch the surface. This doesn't scratch paint or metals or fabric.
Right, that's where I was going.
But, no, it'll clean, it'll clean fabric. It cleans like just about everything. It's fantastic. It's kind of science at its best. So the great thing about it is the solid form, the dry ice hits the surface, cleans the surface, then turns back to the gas form of CO2. Now, we're not producing CO2. We use reclaimed CO2 to do the process. So the application's pretty broad, from cleaning, say, a gas grill, so a lot of consumer items, automotive there is, there's engines, there's, there's a ton of different things that can be cleaned, like a mountain bike, dirty mountain bike. You have a $10,000 mountain bike, and some people do. They don't want to wash it. They want to clean it without any chemicals or water. So we're not putting any waters or chemicals into the environment. We're not putting, we're not abrading the surface at all.
So you make your own dry ice?
No, it's purchased from like a company, Dry Ice Corp. in Bradford, that, for instance, I'd be buying the dry ice for them, or All Gas up in Hartford area. Can I hand you guys out, this is kind of a six pager about the property I'm looking at, and the description of the business, the equipment. Thank you very much.
Is there a facility in existence anywhere that does this currently?
There are. I actually belong to a group that gets together every Monday night to talk about their new businesses. Some are up and functioning.
I'll keep one for the record, actually. Thank you.
And we talk about different applications. So for years, this has been used in the industrial space, but now since the machines are more refined, we can control the PSI, the CFM, the particle size. So the dry ice comes in a 3mm pellet. It's kind of like a rabbit drop. It's really small, a grain of rice. So the machine can shave that down to about 0.03mm of pellet, or it's almost like a grain of salt, propel it, and clean very gentle things like Alcantara steering wheels. You can remove the, say, just for an example, from a business card, lithography. It can be used to like remove, printing on a business card, but can also be very aggressive to remove barnacles from the underside of a boat. So it's got a wide range of applications, and.
And post, okay, this, post-cleaning, post-applying, it dissolves into the atmosphere?
The dirt falls to the ground. There are some particulate that does go into the air, but most of it can be swept up. Depending on what that material is, has to be disposed of properly.
What kind of environmental concerns are we looking at?
I'm in contact with someone at the DEP, Ross Burnell. I've got email chain here that I can give you a copy of. He suggested, we both corresponded about, I don't know, it's probably about six months ago, that we gather up about a pound of this material. The questionable, I mean, I could be cleaning a lawnmower deck, and most of that material's going to be organic, and that's simply thrown away. But anything in question should be gathered up, a pound of it, sent off to a testing facility that's DEP-approved. We'll get a test and see how it needs to be disposed of appropriately. It's a startup business. I have not done this process yet, but I'm going to be going down to Florida for training.
So that the, the stuff being removed, we have to figure out where that's going to go, or how to dispose it?
Right, and that's why I need to figure that out with testing and the.
The material that you're putting on, the.
The dry ice. Dry ice. Sublimates.
Give me a different word that I understand.
It goes from a solid directly to a gas.
That's what I'm asking.
Right. Yeah.
And DEP would have no problem with that because it's returning the CO2 to its natural form or to a different.
Right, and this is FDA-approved, you know, USDA-approved. It's pretty environmentally, it's environmentally friendly. I mean, it's not kind of, it is. I mean, the only thing you're left with is just the dirt you're taking off or grind.
So the CO2 is a net zero because where they're manufacturing the dry ice, they're pulling it out of the air?
That's correct.
Okay. So the fact that it's coming from Bradford and being dumped in Orange isn't like we're despoiling the environment.
Just for the record, that was a little joke in there, the pulling it out of the air thing, but I like.
So, so effectively, it's like a bad Agatha Christie book where they like shoot somebody with the bullet that's made out of ice, and it melts inside them, and they can't figure out how they did it. Yeah. So basically, it's using dry ice as the aggregate in a sandblasting machine.
Similar to that, yes.
Jack, what would it, in 38349, I assume, or something like?
Sure, yeah. So I had two, neither of them fit very well, but based on what I could see, that they were the closest. 383-49A stores in other buildings and structures where goods are sold, or services rendered primarily at retail. So that's our retail section.
Service rendered.
Yeah, it's a service rendered.
It's a legal, I assume this is a legal, you know, process or thing that they're promoting.
Right. It's approved by EPA, FDA, and USDA.
So why would we not, why do we have to go any further, is my question?
Again, it's one of those, you know, you hear when, in our conversation, you could be doing jewelry or automotive parts.
Right.
You know, when you are a boat, you know, so it brings in the question of what kind of day-to-day operations, which, you know, again, I had no idea of until speaking with Mr. Landino.
Stores or the building where goods are sold.
So you could say that it is just a service rendered at retail?
Would you let a cleaning service go in?
I would.
Right, at the most basic level.
It just happens to use a unique process.
I'm a non-preacher guy. I mean, if a service wants to go in, that's good.
Like, where kind of tripped me up was the, you know, how are people going to be bringing cars and boats and things like that?
They bring them into.
What's the square footage for your gun?
The square footage is 3,000. I mean, if I get to a certain growth, you know, with scale the business, yeah, I'll probably open up a mobile aspect of the business and go to clean a boat bottom, say.
Right now, the people are coming to you with their thing.
Their thing, yes.
And it would be entirely within enclosed space?
Yes, yes. I'm not going to be outside of the enclosed space now.
Do you have to do some special ventilation or anything like that?
There's a particulate capture system with it. Similar, I guess, it's a dust collection system, which isn't very large. That's about it. There's evacuation for any CO2, let's say if I store the CO2, the dry ice, it sublimates. So the CO2 levels, it's heavier than air, it's going to sit down at the floor. So about 12 inches off the floor, there's a monitor. The monitor will go off, trigger a fan, and, you know, clear the room out of.
Do we need Health Department approval or anything, or what do we?
I'm not, I'm honestly not sure. Something new, I think Brian, yeah, we would have to ask.
Failing inspector.
Well, that's part of the thing, though. I mean, that.
Site plan.
Well, no, I mean, consider the possibility that maybe it ought to be a special use. Then you can.
I'm still stuck on, why wouldn't it be under A?
Right.
Can you read it?
Yeah. So stores and other buildings and structures where goods are sold or services rendered primarily at retail.
That's it.
It's pretty broad, yeah.
It is very.
If it were a dry cleaner.
That's actually handled separately under.
Well, yeah, dry cleaners are.
And they also have.
A lot of chemicals.
Perk, yeah, bad stuff.
Right.
No, all I'm getting at is that, you know, it's, it sounds like something we have a lot of, we would have a lot of questions about.
No, I think so. But let's assume.
But if you say, if you say it's a permitted use, that means it's permitted as a right. And we don't necessarily get to all those questions, do we?
No, if you were not to change anything about the site and was just doing internal improvements, it just goes through the building department.
On a special use permit application, on the other hand, you know. On a special use permit application, on the other hand, you know, uh, there may be, I, this is all new to me.
Me too, that's why I brought it here.
I don't know.
I mean, it would seem that you'd have a site safety plan in place, because if you could have a level of CO2 sitting on the floor, if you somehow fell down and were knocked out, you would not have enough oxygen, right? So, I mean, but you have something that's set up with alarms and the.
Right, it's gonna evacuate it at a, a certain level.
And is, are you seeing as the public being in that area while you're using the machine?
Drop off.
Drop off, and I'll let you know when it's ready to be picked up, or go get a, a coffee and come back.
Yeah.
So what, um, on?
Yeah.
So, we're not here for any application, none, none's been filed yet, we're not giving any.
You're not gonna get one if it's a permitted use.
That's what I'm getting at, you, you won't see this again.
Right.
Right.
If you say, yeah.
Until you need something cleaned.
Which could be my whole house.
Um, and then, you know, just, just again, devil's advocate, uh, under prohibited uses, three eighty-three dash fifty-one B, uh, prohibits painting, plumbing, electrical, sheet metal, carpentry, woodworking, blacksmith, welding, and machine shops. Could somebody argue that this is a machine shop?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
I mean, in prohibited uses, A, painting, uh, motor vehicle repair, truck, uh, motor vehicle washing, again, not perfect definitions by any means, but.
Hence why I'm here.
Yeah.
Those, those are all generating, you know, some sort of off-gas.
Right.
Product, I mean, with respect to the painting.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, the sheet metal shops is more of an industrial type zone. I mean, in this particular.
Yeah. I, I, see, I think services rendered at retail.
Yeah.
That kind of hits it.
I think that's the closest fit we have.
It's specifically an intended to be broad.
Right.
Yeah, but if he, if his process was using, uh, perk to clean machine parts.
Right.
You wouldn't necessarily want that on the poster.
No, and I think we could argue because of the perk, that it would be more to like C.
More like a dry cleaner.
Right.
I mean, you know, you know, there, there are all sorts of.
I, I'm not opposed to learning more about it, obviously, but I'm, I, I mean, if it, it is what it is, if he comes in with an application, right?
Yeah.
Or not, he's going to the Building Department.
If it, if it's a permitted use, and he's not changing the building.
Building Department, Building Department is gonna get any other approvals that the Building Department has to get?
They might have.
The, yeah, every department will have to sign off on it.
Police, fire.
Um, you know, police, fire, health, everything will, but it's not gonna come in front of this board and.
I'm not sure it should be in front of the board.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, the health and safety aspects will be dealt with by other people, yeah.
You don't see it as a zoning issue at all.
Not yet, he hasn't said anything that.
No, I mean, it's a new technology.
Again, it's not a question of not yet, if you, if you were concerned that that might be the case, that the, that you had concerns, then you would say.
Information to make that determination?
Come back with an app, you know, come back with a, with a, an application to amend the zoning regulations, to include this use specifically, as a special use.
He wants that guidepost, that's something different, yeah.
And then he can come in and, you know, formally, I, I don't, I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a service to me.
Yeah, me too, a legal service.
Right, and I'm trying to think of what other businesses on Route One are solely service, well, we have some that they service your lawnmower, but they sell you lawnmowers, you know, jewelry stores can service things, and so, I'm trying to think, what's one hundred percent service? I'm sure there are some out there.
Doctor's office.
Yes, attorneys.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And you off-gas a lot more than that.
Oh, please.
I think, I, I think that's more of.
Thank you very much.
You know, I, I think.
I was waiting for it.
I think that may be more what we're talking about in the regulations. Service rendered primarily at retail.
I think that's kind of it.
No, but I'm saying it's, what we wouldn't, ye- may, yes, but we wouldn't give a, a, you know, a doctor's office a second, or a real estate, yeah, we wouldn't give a second thought of that.
Right.
This is a process that's sort of like, um, you know, it, it's, it's sort of industrial too.
Well, if he's wildly successful, it could become, so say, like, uh, a cab company decides they want him to, you know, clean their engines or something like that, you know, at a different, at a certain scale, this, uh, you know, but then it's like, not at re-, you know, it's more of a.
Well, then he needs bar space in, in LA, but, so.
It's not really manufacturing or process.
No.
Manufact- this is under, uh.
A.
Well, no, it's actually.
K.
These are still permitted uses, I'm sorry.
I, I was looking at that one too.
Yeah.
For, for K.
That was your other one?
Yeah, that was the other one, it.
Processing or assembling goods.
A or K, if you think A or K or.
I think A.
Well, K, it is a process.
But it's not assembling of goods, is it? It's pro- manufacture, comma, processing or assembling of goods.
So processing goods.
Yeah.
For sale, only on the premises and at retail.
No.
Service.
I don't think that applies.
Right.
It's a service.
Still not sure what we should do.
What's that?
I'm still not sure what we're gonna do.
I took you from an easy one with the, uh, yeah, the Greek party too.
We're trying to make it more complicated, I'm not sure it has to be.
No, I. I mean, I think what, where we're getting sort of held up by is, we don't understand the technology, it's new technology. It's a new product, nobody heard of cleaning like this. So, we know what dry cleaners are, you know.
But this ain't.
We know what laundromats are.
Right, but this isn't that.
It isn't that.
And.
Why isn't it?
The other thing is.
But this might become the new technology of this type of cleaning.
And the health issues are gonna be handled by the Health Department, or somebody else other than us.
And the taking away, the, uh, whatever is, is cleaned. You know, if it's, it's got hydrocarbons in it, he's gonna have to take that to one place, if it's, you know, dirt, it can probably go to the dump. If it's organic, it's gotta go wherever it's going, but.
Yeah, what I, yeah, I mean, if this were, if this use were in the, uh, LI-two zone, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
No.
Cause I'm sure there's a, a category of, you know, a permitted use.
Right.
It, this falls squarely.
A lot, a lot closer.
It just strikes me, this use is more appropriate in the, in the LI-two, it doesn't mean it's not, you know, appropriate.
Your thought difference?
Between what you think should be in the LI-two and this one, is because of the process that Michael described as to how he gets to be able to clean?
Well, just, it sounds like a, uh, you know, more.
Because the ultimate retail, right, the ultimate retail certainly would be falling in, in.
Yeah, customer comes in.
Yeah.
Right.
Drops off of something for repair, and picks it up, that's retail. You don't, like industrial, there's, there's no retail component.
So the only.
Uh, once you, once you wanted to argue that retail is, you're, you're buying something.
No, service is retail, you get a lamp fixed.
So the difference that you, that you're feeling.
The lamp repair place.
That's true. And for that matter, uh, nights.
Right, but again, you can buy there too, but, but, but there's service.
Right.
Uh, the battery place, you go get things fixed there, you don't have to buy anything, but they can fix your stuff.
Right, so I think the only thing that really i- is, we're struggling with is that new technology, and what is that, how do we categorize that?
Yeah, but, so, so he's cleaning with CO2.
All, all good stuff.
If he was, if he was hiring, you know, college kids to do it with, you know, suds and water, we, you'd have worse stuff to do.
Whatever, whatever exactly he does there, he's gonna have to do in accordance with applicable law.
Right.
And this is not the only law, the zoning is not, you know, so he'll, whatever he does.
It will have to get approved from the necessary departments.
I would think that.
Well, the necessary departments are, there may be some state agency that has control of some aspect of, you know.
I think it, it may, I don't think it's a zoning issue, actually, at this point.
Yeah.
Right, say, say furniture repair store.
Mm-hmm.
You bring, you know, say there was one located that would go in the retail zone.
Right.
And I think that's, we just don't have any, but, to me.
Yeah.
It's closed.
I think that's a good, good point.
I think it's a service and it's covered.
It's a service.
What do we do, let the, uh, zoning enforcement officer take it from here?
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I think we're.
Well, we could, I mean, there's not, there's, there's no.
I don't think it's a zoning issue.
There's no special permit application, it's not a prohibited use.
He's gotta get approvals from all the necessary.
So the only thing left is, is it a permitted use, and if you think, if we think.
I think it's a permitted service.
I think our consensus is, it is service rendered, which would fit under permitted uses three eighty-three dash forty-nine A.
You'll get our cease and desist right after you open.
Well, we bring our stuff to get cleaned, I'm fascinated.
The, uh, and so I don't know that we need a, a vote.
No, nope, there would be no vote.
It would never have come before us had.
No, we would just.
Had you done this on your own.
Exactly, we, we would write, or mark in the minutes that, you know, it was the consensus of the board that the proposed dry ice cleaning business fit under section three eighty-three dash forty-nine A permitted uses.
Okay.
As a service.
As a service.
As a service.
Retail, that's exactly what it is, when you drill it down.
And when you get wildly successful, would you please go to the LI-two?
Yeah, we got some nice space for you.
Yeah, we, we got a spot.
Alright.
I think that's.
So that was very helpful.
Yeah, thank you.